Good afternoon. This is the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting, April 28th. I'm calling this reconvening, this board meeting, from our last Commissioners meeting. Just as a matter of notification, the public may watch the meeting in the jury room, on the third floor, or on www.wayngov.com. I think we have Commissioner Acock and Commissioner Gurley can be with us, but we lost Mr. Alex Acock from our Hunna community. He was the last charter fire department member at Hunna Fire Department, and he passed away this weekend, and he's going to be sorely missed in our community and our county. Also, I want to continue, for us to continue to pray for Commissioner Gurley. We know that he's had some issues lately as far as his health, and that we just want to keep Commissioner Gurley in our prayers at this time. I would like to call on Mr. Honeycutt for our agenda today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also on our agenda today, we've asked that Janie Jayberg, who is the CEO of UNC Wayne Health, she's on the line, and she would like to give us an update on happenings with COVID-19 and things that are going on at the hospitals. So, Janie, I hope you're on the line?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Craig, would you like me to go ahead?
Yes, please. Thank you, Janie.
Oh, I will. Thank you so much, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all today. I'd like to give you an update from a healthcare perspective and from Wayne's perspective, and certainly if you have questions, if I know the answers, I'll share them. If not, I'll get back with you. But what I'd like to start with, and I'm thinking this will probably take about 10 or 15 minutes, if that's too long, just stop me, and I'll talk really fast, so maybe I can get it down to 14. But I do, I do want to give you some updates on some numbers. This is something that we share with our staff, our medical staff and our leadership every day. So Johns Hopkins, right now, in the United States, is stating that we have 989,000 cases of COVID in the country, and the United States deaths have risen to 56,386, and that's an increase of about 1,500 over yesterday. We get our North Carolina data from DHHS, and the case volume right now is showing 9,586 with 342 deaths in North Carolina. Wayne County is showing 639 deaths. We are third in the state, which I think you all are aware of that.
That was 639. That was 639.
639. Yes, sir.
That wasn't deaths, though.
That wasn't deaths, yeah.
Cases, right?
This from this morning, and this is total. Yes, sir. And we're showing 10 deaths. One of the clarifying points I'd like to make to our county commissioners, there have been more deaths in Wayne County than 10, but the way it's counted for us is only those that die and that are in Wayne County, that are from Wayne County. So if someone from Wilson passes away, he won't show up on our numbers. And those are those deaths that we attribute to COVID-positive patients. I want to make that clarification for y'all. We currently, at this moment, do have 24 patients in-house and four that were tested. So I just wanted to give you that information on the volume. Second, I want to thank you all and our community, and I'll get to the community a little bit more in a couple of minutes, but I want to thank you all for the phone calls I've gotten, the text messages, just keeping the open lines of communication. I think right now, more than ever, the importance of our healthcare system and our community government has to be hand in hand. Regardless of any differences we may have ever had or ever will have, right now, we have a common enemy, and I think together, we can work to make sure we're doing everything for our community to be the very best that we can be. I do want to share with the county commissioners, and you may have heard this already, and I apologize if I'm repeating things, but we do have three very separate and distinct COVID units. We have a unit on one of our floors that we set up about eight weeks ago, which we set up Incident Command. It's now, it's been eight and a half weeks, it's hard to believe. As soon as we heard about this and started getting data, we knew it was the right thing to do. We also have determined and decided that we needed a second unit. The first unit will hold 50 patients. Now, some of those patients would have to share a room if we filled that entire unit. The second unit, which is on a different floor, also will hold 50 patients, but we have four-bed units on that floor if we should need those. And then the third unit we have is what we're calling our COVID ICU. We have a 16-bed ICU, which you all are aware of, that we are not putting COVID patients in. We are putting all of our COVID patients and our rule-out COVID patients in that COVID ICU unit, which is on the first floor and close access. So that seems to have worked out really well for us. Our staff is cross-trained. They have done a phenomenal job. I have to tell you that any of you would be proud to be in the foxhole with any of these teams fighting this war. They have been absolutely phenomenal, the medical staff, the team. It doesn't matter what we ask, they're stepping up and doing it. In our eyes, this is a war. And y'all don't see that side of it like we do, but you can be very proud of your team here at Wayne. I do want to talk briefly and give you an update on the prison, which I think you all are aware. We do have several cases that have been noted at the prison. We do currently have a few inmates here at the hospital right now, but I'd also like to do a shout-out to Craig, his team, you all, EMS, emergency management, the folks at the prison. We've had multiple, multiple phone calls in setting up a plan for that, and we are prepared and ready. I have reached out to my sister hospitals across eastern North Carolina, in and outside of UNC, to make sure that if we did need any assistance and help, that they would be there. However, I do think Wayne is set up for whatever may come our way, and we have several backup plans, so I thought y'all would want to know that. We have early on asked people to wear masks when we still have visitors. We've pretty much negated any visitors here to protect them and frankly, to protect our patients from people coming in, because we know how much this is spreading and it's continuing to spread. So now, all of us, including myself, wear a mask. I currently don't have one on, but my door's closed, I'm in my office, and I don't know that you would hear me very well if I was trying to talk through my mask, but that's our plan. Our skilled nursing facilities, I think, have, for the most part, done a great job. We've got a couple that have had some patients that we're seeing, but this is, as I said, this is a tough disease, and it spreads quickly, and it hits hard and fast. We, as I said, have segregated our units, so we're keeping our patients separate. And one point I want to bring out, and I said this on the radio this weekend, I said this on social media, patients that are not feeling well need to come to the hospital. So what we're finding is that patients are becoming sick with something else. Maybe it's chest pain, maybe it's dizziness, and they're afraid to come because of COVID. Don't be. Please don't be. We are taking all kinds of precautions, but if you need to be seen, we want to see you. So come to the emergency department, go to your doctor, whatever you feel you need to do, but just do not ignore it. Please. And this isn't happening all over the country, this is not just specific to Wayne, but you all, as county commissioners, I'm going to count on your help to communicate that to your neighbors, to your friends. Don't ignore health signs. Please let us help you. We are trying to expand those urgent, emergent and priority needs within our imaging department, some of our ancillary departments now. We are hoping that as time goes by, we'll be able to begin to do more and more, but we will be doing it very slowly and very methodically, for a couple of reasons. One, and I'm sure you've heard this term before, personal protective equipment, PPE, we are going through it very, very quickly, and that's obviously increased with the number of cases that we currently have in the hospital. So we have to make sure that we keep that and have it. So we are ordering as much as we can, as you can imagine. I've been in touch with the Senator and Senator, easy for me to say, Jim and John, to help us through this, and they've been great as well. I want to do a huge shout-out to the community. I said I'd circle back to this, and that is, I have never, in my career, and I've been through some tough things in my career in healthcare, but never have I seen a community step up to what Wayne County has done. There isn't a day that goes by that we, all of us, aren't getting text messages or phone calls or emails or something on our car, like a "Go get 'em, you've got this," or there's chalk art right now on our sidewalk that I saw last night when I walked out, had artists trying to do that. It may not seem a lot to you all, but I'm telling you, after a 12- or 14-hour day, we walk out and we see that, it's been incredible. We've had meals, we've had snacks, treats, just flowers. I mean, I could go on and on, and that's what gives us the strength to keep going. So, on behalf of all of us, to Wayne community, thank you so much for everything that you all have done. And I think I'm going to stop there and open it up for questions that y'all might have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Page.
Janie, this is Bill.
Hi, Bill.
How you doing today?
I'm doing great, thank you.
Just, you know, to let the public know, I know we're bound to be having a decline in our ER traffic. Do you have any numbers on that? I'm trying to let them know that there's availability, they need to go if they're sick.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Our ED volume is about half of what it usually is. We have put tents outside their drive-through, so you can actually just drive through, and it's incredibly quick. So if it's just something really fast that you want to see a provider, we have a provider out there as well. But if you need to come in, or we believe you need to come into the ED, we will bring you in and take care of you. But yeah, we are moving patients through very, very, very quickly right now.
Very good. Second question, and they have some protective equipment problems. The N95 masks, we have got a solution on that at the hospital, is that not correct? Where we can use them?
We do.
Could you describe that?
Yes. Currently, we have, and I'm going to say currently, we have enough N95 masks that we feel comfortable. Of course, things change dramatically, but we can reprocess our N95 masks with a hydrogen-based solution that we have. That has been tested, it has been approved by the vendor that we work with. We, however, have not pulled out any of those yet. We are keeping those as backup, should we get to that point.
Well, that's good use.
It is.
On your other equipment, are you saying you're still having shortages, or you've got an adequate amount, or is there anything that we can do to help move it along?
Well, thank you for asking. Right now, we're good. The one that we tend to be seeing shortages on are the lightweight gowns that we put on when we go into, they're lighter weight than some of our primary ones, when we go in to see patients. But our materials management department has done a pretty phenomenal job, and UNC has stepped right up and supported us and helped us as well. That's the one we tend to see, we call it our burn rate, that we're burning through a little bit quicker. But right now, I'm going to check that box good for today. Like I said, anything can change pretty quickly, but thank you for asking.
Well, I know the other primary physicians in the county are going through a lot of them, too, because I went to mine yesterday just for a regular checkup, and they made me, came out and met me in the parking lot, checked my temperature and asked me a dozen questions, and then made me wear a mask to go inside. So I know they're being used a lot everywhere, just a comment.
They are. Yes, sir.
Janie Joe Dottery here. How are you today?
I'm doing well, sir. How are you today?
Great.
Good.
You mentioned earlier, there were 600 currently, how many have actually currently contracted the virus? 600 and some odd, what was that number again?
So, you mean, as far as the community?
Yeah.
Yeah, the community.
Here in Wayne County?
Yeah, here in Wayne County, 639. And let me clarify, these numbers come from Wayne County, that's where we get the data, from the Health Department. There are probably a lot more cases, in all honesty, that haven't been tested. That's Janie's opinion, but I think most people would agree with that. But the ones that have been tested and are positive are 639.
And you currently have 24 patients that are in-house, is that correct?
That is correct.
Out of the 24 patients that are in-house, how many of those come from Noose Correctional? Seven come from Noose Correctional?
Yes, sir.
And we're just seeing an unbelievable number, I forget what the number is. They actually tested, I believe, all of the inmates at Noose Correctional, which was around 770, as I recall, and I forget the number that tested positive at Noose Correctional.
I can tell you, our understanding of that is it's over 500 with inmates and some of their teammates is over 500. It's my best to confirm with them, but it's a significant number.
I think the question a lot of people are having, and that is, that it's just phenomenal that 95% to 98% of those inmates, in a closed environment, actually showed no symptoms. Could you expand on that a little bit?
You know, that is, that's the million-dollar question. I don't know if it's still that, if that's still the case, sir. And not being a physician, I don't want to speak out of turn, but that's what was reported to us. I think the other thing that's important, one of the things we do know about this virus is you may be asymptomatic on Monday and be really sick on Wednesday, or you may not be. But, you know, just because they're asymptomatic now, the one thing I do know, doesn't mean that they will stay that way, and that's our concern, just like the ones that we currently have. And we've had some and discharged some as well. This is just what we currently have right now.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You are so welcome.
Janie, this is Commissioner Mayo.
Hi, Commissioner. How are you?
Good, I hope you are. I just had a question. Right now, you are only doing emergency surgeries, is that correct?
Emergency, urgent, and then very high priority, things that cannot wait for a couple of weeks.
Okay. Do you have a point in time that you're thinking about opening up your surgeries to other types of surgery? I know that a lot of your revenue comes from your patient surgeries.
Yes, sir.
So I was wondering if you had some kind of idea of what you were thinking along those lines?
If you would have asked me this two weeks ago, before what happened, if Noose Correctional happened, I'd probably have a better answer for you. But because we have this in our community right now, it's real hard for us to anticipate when we might be able to open up completely. I assure you, it is, my number, one, short of taking care of my patients and making sure that we have everything that we need for our patients, is to get our hospital back to normal operations. However, to risk everyone with this incredibly harsh virus, that's probably, there's probably a better word than that, and running through our protective equipment too quickly and not having it for those patients that are positive, that would be inappropriate for me to do. So I need to be prepared to respond quickly. So I'm working with the medical staff. In fact, I met with a bunch of the surgeons last night, and we talked, talked through this, and we want to see what happens in the community, because it's not just the correctional facility that we're seeing some increases in cases. There are some other areas that we see it. So I want to see what happens in eastern North Carolina, particularly Wayne County, before I say go.
Janie, I want to follow up on that. The Noose Correctional, you don't get all their confirmed cases, is that right? They have their own set up on the state level with fee beds, I understand?
They do. They have the central prison, and they have some beds there. To my knowledge, right now, we definitely don't get all their positives, they're keeping them, they're doing a good job, unless they become ill. And pretty much, they're calling 911 and they're coming here. They do have access to the central prison, and I don't know if they have sent any to the central prison at this time.
Okay.
And they're limited with what they can do there.
Right.
Or we can do everything.
Thank you. Mr. Page?
Couple more questions, Janie, Bill. We hadn't had any reinfections, had we, in Wayne County? I mean, we've seen a few cases of South Korea, but I didn't know of any in the United States.
People that have had it and had it again?
Right.
Is that what you're asking?
Right.
No one has said that to me. I've not heard that, but I...
Well, I had a lot of time to sit home and watch Fox News, so that's the reason.
Oh, okay. Well, it's probably good that I don't have time to watch the news.
I wish I didn't.
Yeah. Don't watch the news.
Well, all of them are saying the same thing.
Yeah.
Most of the people that you're, that we have up there, they have some underlying health issues, or are we seeing a number of healthy people being impacted as well?
It's my understanding, from what I'm seeing, is that the majority of them do have what we call comorbidities or other, other things happening to them, but there are some people that are healthy and have none, that are contracting this disease.
Yeah, probably more of us have underlying problems than we think we do as well.
I would, I would guess that, yes, you're absolutely correct. Even something as simple as high blood pressure.
That's me.
Which you need to approach level.
That's all I've got.
Commissioner Kamarty, did you have any questions for Janie? Mr. Kamarty?
Please, I'm here.
Will you stay with us, Mr. Kamarty?
I'm here. Pardon me.
Okay.
As I listen to the conversation, and I note that it sounds like we have 24 in the hospital, if that's how it's characterized, and several of those come from Noose River, I would wonder if the remaining ones were staff members from the Noose River site?
No.
Ma'am?
They're not.
They're not?
Yes, sir.
So they're just from, they're just from the general population?
Yes, sir.
A follow-up to that is, are you doing any kind of pushing level of tracing?
That is not our responsibility, that tracing is done with the Health Department. We don't have access to that kind of data.
But the Health Department has done the tracing on the active cases that's in the hospital?
I don't know if they've completed them or what part they're in. Once we get the patients, sir, we focus on their health, that particular patient's health, and let the investigation through other agencies. Craig may have a better answer for that than I could.
And it is all done through the Health Department, and I'm not sure where they're at on the tracing, or Ken has not mentioned any issues with respect to having a problem with tracing or being behind, so I think they're pretty much up to date.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Well...
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could say, I do want to thank Janie and the work that she's done, and one of the things I want to really give a shout-out to our staff as well, the issue at Noose Correctional kind of jumped up on us the last couple of weeks. I think we have worked through the issues that were out there. I appreciate the help also our legislative delegation has given us with respect to the coordination with the Department of Corrections, but again, a lot of big shout-outs in planning to Aaron Stryker and also to Dave Cutterback and to Janie and her team as well, and just a lot of great work was done in a very short period of time.
And if you don't mind, Commissioners, I'd like to echo that. I've had the opportunity now to work with all of the folks that Craig just named, and I have found them to be absolutely incredible and do whatever is necessary to protect this community. You all can be very proud of the team that you have assembled.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much, Janie, for all the enlightening us on what you're doing, and I, as Chairman, we all thank you for what you're doing, your staff, working with the county. We will get through this.
We will.
We are resilient people, and people such as yourself and your staff and all of our county employees and first responders, everybody, including private citizens. I'm including private citizens. We're all part of the solution here. So thank you so much for what you do, and we're here for you, okay?
Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate your help.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jan.
All right. Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Stay safe, wash your hands.
We'll move on next to unfinished business. Next is a motion to approve joint application with the Wayne County Board of Education for Tier One Lottery Funds Grant application. As the Board is aware, at our meeting last Tuesday, we did approve of funding for property for Fremont Elementary, the new school up in Fremont, the 20.8 acres. There was a contingency that the Board did put upon that, and the contingency was that the Board of Education applied with the county for the Tier One Lottery Grant funding. And I just got this email from Mike Dunsmore, it said, "Craig, at last night's regular monthly Board of Education meeting, my Board motioned and approved that I pursue and complete the NC Needs-Based Capital Funding Grant. This requires approval and signature from both Board Chairs to accompany the application. The grant is for every $1 from the county is matched by $5 from the state, up to $15 million from the state. Next year's grant application has not been posted. If it follows last year's schedule, it will be released in late summer with a submission deadline in late August. It must be a shovel-ready project. We now have the site, but will need some engineering work completed to be shovel-ready. If you need anything else, let me know. Signed, Mike Dunsmore, Superintendent Wayne County Public Schools."
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Dottery.
If it follows last year's schedule, it will be released in late summer with a submission deadline in late August. It must be a shovel-ready project. We now have the site, but will need some engineering work completed to be shovel-ready. If you need anything else, let me know. Signed, Mike Dunsmore, Superintendent Wayne County Public Schools."
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Dottery. Things evolve very rapidly. I think one of the thought processes that we had was that we know we have a tremendous need at building this school in Fremont, but additionally, we have the tremendous need at Rosewood Middle. And I think just as early as last week, we were all of the impression that there was a possibility of the budget being passed at some point, and those funds, around 19 million, was in the budget for new school construction in Wayne County. As early as today, we hear that there is no, um, there, there's no press. In fact, the statement was made from the Senate that they do not intend to even bring up the veto of the budget, and so it looks like they're not even going to be voting on the budget in this short session, which would mean that that 19 million dollars is not going to be, it's going to evaporate. So it is almost imperative, if we are going to get any support in regards to funding of this project, it is, we're definitely going to have to go hot and heavy after these lottery funds for tier-one counties. Also, is, is something that we all are going to have to be faced with, and that is trimming all of our budgets, including the budget possibly on this construction. Now, there is going to be some savings from architect, but we're going to have to find every way we can to reduce those dollars, because the county will actually have to put in $1 for every $3 in matching grant funds. So with that in mind, I've made, had my comments before the motion, I apologize. I make a motion that we approve the joint application with the Wayne County Board of Education for a Tier One Lottery Fund Grant. Okay, we have, we have a motion on the floor. Are they, is there any discussion by Commissioners, Commissioner Camardi?
No comment.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say yes, please?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All opposed, say no, so we're unanimous. Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Tonica?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under new business, we do have in front of you a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-16, a resolution designating agents for the County of Wayne for federal and/or state assistance under the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistant Act, dealing with FEMA and also with the State Department of Emergency Management. And this would allow Chip and I to serve as your agents in dealing with FEMA and also with the state in applying for and trying to receive additional funds back to Wayne County.
Mr. Chairman, also move that we designate the agents of the county manager and assistant county manager.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion, any question? All in favor of the motion, say yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion is unanimous. Motion carries. Mr. Tonica?
And number two, under new business, is motion to approve and appoint applicant to fill the unexpired term of the Lake Commissioner, John M. Bell, for the Board of Commissioners' seat of District Three.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Page.
I move that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners appoint Adrian World to complete John M. Bell's term in District Three.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to, for Mr. Adrian World to fill the vacant seat of Commissioner John M. Bell. All in favor of this motion, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no?
No.
Okay.
No.
Motion carries three, yea, and, and one, no. Motion carries. Okay. I would like to, before we adjourn, I would like to, have I done everything I need to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Parker, I'm checking, I'm checking with Mr. Parker, make sure we're all good here. Okay. Before we adjourn, I have a, a statement as Commissioner of this board that I would like to read to the public.
Go ahead.
No? Okay. Any, are there any, are there any other comments other than about this election, nomination? Do you have any comments that we need to bring up before?
No comments.
The board? I've got one, and I'm sorry, I'm going to break the ice here. In reference to the letter that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners signed last Commissioner meeting on April 14th to send to Governor Cooper regarding small businesses in Wayne County, maybe asking the governor to take a look at opening up some of the businesses that have been closed, and look at opening some of these business, businesses under the same criteria as the big box stores. If you look, if you read the letter that we sent to the governor, and I want, I want to point out one particular area. We tell the governor in the first part how good a job he's doing, which he is, but he's, he also says, and we also say, "Your recent order requiring a limited number of people in grocery stores, and some of the big box stores continues to mandate safe social distancing," which we all know. It appears to the Wayne County Board of Commissioners that such restrictions could also be applied to some of the small businesses that have already been closed completely. The Wayne County Board of Commissioners request that you consider this proposal. Now, I want to make this clear to the public, there's not a single person that I know of that can read this letter and come to the conclusion that this Board of Commissioners wants to turn everybody loose in this county and go wild with opening restaurants, beauty salons, and everything else with no restrictions. And when there's some people that have, have told us that, we, this, this letter does not say in any way, shape, or form condoning that. If a person gets that idea from reading this letter, they have an alternative reason for what they're saying. It's not what this letter says. So I want to make sure that the public understands that if you hear this stuff out on the street, go read the letter. All you got to do is read it, and you'll see where we stand as a Board of Commissioner. Yes, we, we want to do it safely. Yes, we want to do the six-foot. Yes, we want to do whatever when temperature checking, all these things. 20% of the, 20% of the fire code capacity of a restaurant. We're just asking, and we say that, that Wayne County Board of Commissioners request that you consider this repos, proposal. That's all we ask. I wanted to make that clear, and that's all the comments I have. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.